I hope she would believe us in a word of prayer.
Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this day. Just thank you for the beautiful weather you've sent our way, dear Lord. And we, we do ask, dear Lord, for blessings of water to, to your creation. I thank you, dear Lord, for the blessings you give to us to meet publicly in an open meeting. I pray to look for our country and we pray to Lord for those that are serving our country. God and protect them, dear Lord. Be with the leaders that they will know exactly to lean back on your, your word, your wisdom and clarity. I pray to Lord for this court. I pray the blessings will be upon them. I pray with the, the decisions that need to be made, that it will be with wisdom and clarity as well. Thank you, dear Lord, for allowing us to serve you, and I ask this in Jesus's name. Amen.
Please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're going to call this Commissioners Court in session. We have a court in present consent agenda.
I have the regular minutes of February the 12th. And then I do have a personal report. Have certification of additional revenue. I do have amendment changes by fund. I have an investment report for January 2024. And the audit for treasuries report, I have an un reconciled February of 2024. And then I have a reconciled January 2024 with the Treasurers' affidavit. Departmental financial reports, I have DMD and the tax office. I have nine bills claims and accounts. And then on the, I have no open meetings of public information. On cyber security, I have Doug Paisley and Michael Hedrick. And on the purchasing acknowledgements, I have none.
C five, uh, and this is.
The departmental?
Yeah, I mean, that's what he's showing on there.
Oh, I think the bills are showing up as C five also.
Okay. Well, this one had the 11 Court of Appeals on there, and I was wondering what that was for.
Oh, what does it say at the top? Two, please. Um, we need to talk about that one anyway.
Okay.
Is it a financial report? No, it is payables for February 26th. Underneath bills claims. Right. And it's 11 Court of Appeals. Oh, those are fees that we collect and turn over to Court of Appeals.
Okay.
So that, 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 see the middle numbers start with the two, those are always a payable. So it's something we've collected for somebody else that we're now turning over to them.
Okay. Well, I noticed that the county court was on it four times.
Yes, because I was behind.
Okay.
Tyler's still.
No, I'm, no, I was just, I was just wondering what.
October, November, December.
I was just wondering why the court, the county court, I thought it may have been for a, uh, an appeal or something.
And I have two changes to the February 26 bills. Okay, and they will not be moved. I will journal them. And on page four, the Gauls Quartermaster, there's departmental changes. And then on page 11 to Amazon Capital Service, that's the shredder for my office that we're paying out of County Records Management. Only 1,600 was approved. So 70 of that is going to come out of 010-495-057200. And what date of which day? On the February 26 tables. And they're marked on yours, Kathy. That was emails to me? No, it's not marking. No, I attached copies to your signature packet.
That was the 147473 on the shredder?
On the shredder, hang on just a second. Uh, we're going to reduce the 19527 to 12527 and add $70 to come out of county auditor budget.
Okay. That was, that was the 1670. You got to extend a warning on that.
Yes.
Okay.
And I also need to go over the financial report.
Hey, could I get the, one of y'all to give me the department?
Um, yes, that's kind of a trick right now. I need to find out how to do that in Tyler. I'm going to have to ask Tyler how to do it in Tyler.
I just thought you could just write them down.
And I'm not writing all those down. And on the financial, I'll go over January. And first section of the report is the Treasurers' report showing the balance in each of the accounts. And if you will look at the actual ending balance column, that is the general ledger balances. And on page two, general ledger balances, all funds, 10,876,57527. And next is the income statement, and it is by fund, shows original total budget, current total budget, month-to-date activity, year-to-date activity. Also shows year-to-date activity and encumbrances and budget remaining. And there are five pages of that, and the summary page is page five. Then the income statement by fund. Oh, that was the income statement. I'll just, oh, then the balance sheet by fund. And there are a lot of pages. There's 71 pages of that. Then the scheduled lease payments showing the four lease purchase agreements for personal equipment. Then the management report from First Financial Bank. And on the second page, nope, it's on the first page. Bottom right, pledged market value. Our funds on deposit, 9,435,27671. And Prosperity Bank also furnishes a pledged security, and market value of that is 123,43270. Next is interest earned fiscal year 2023 through January. And if you look bottom right, ending balance, 64,7132. The following page shows interest earned through January 2024. And as of the end of January, we had earned 145,35257. And the Treasurers' report. January 31st, 2024, the amount of cash in assets in my office was 9,401,828.616. And then do you want to go over the investment report? We have not had any changes. We, um, we have the three CDs at First Financial Bank. One, $2,000 CD, Dollar CD, it shirts, one at Texas Bank. I might have put the new Prosperity on there. I apologize. There is a new Prosperity Bank CD. We redeemed one and we opened another one, and I did not. Uh, First Financial Bank, First National Bank. Your cell phone, um, money what account? And it has a lead. That's where the money is listed below. Texas Glass, Texas Fund, Texas ARP Funds at Texas Glass. The report is made in accordance with provisions of Government Code 2256, the Public Fund Investment Act. Investments held when used in capital portfolio, the public fund investment act, there was K's investment policies and strategies. If you have any questions, I'll try to answer.
Thank you.
How much is that new Prosperity?
$23,000.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Mary. Questions from Commissioners? Okay.
How much was?
Motion to approve the financial report.
The consent agenda.
The consent agenda.
With a correction and execute the Treasurers' affidavit.
Exactly. By Mr. Raines, second by Mr. Maxwell. All those in favor, say aye. Oppose, same sign.
Actually, I apologize, but it's not correct. No, that was fine. It's it, the, the report's correct. It shows the deposit because the other one was. For future steps, okay.
So I have a question. At the risk of your hair just curling completely up and jumping off the top of your head, why do we have to sign individual deals? If we've got the consent agenda, why can't we just sign one sheet approving the consent agenda?
Because they're different reports.
Well, if it's all part of the consent agenda.
They're still different reports. If the auditor asks, outside auditor asks to see proof, consent should be approved.
I'm sorry, what'd you say, Christine?
Sometimes the outside auditor asks to see that approval page on the surface of the board.
I just thought that'd be a would be an easy way to do that.
Yeah, I don't sense, right?
Yeah, if you had a consent agenda, hey, we approve, this is, this is the signature, we approve that consent agenda.
These are best for you.
Okay. A lot of people are going to get jealous if you keep doing that.
I know.
That's just for you and me.
It's all, we can change.
Okay. But it'll be between you and Lonnie. Actually, if we have to have somebody sign more stuff, let's get Lonnie together.
Yeah, he's a quick one. Quick draw. I had it.
Okay, that's.
Thank you. Do you want me to send Loretta's around now or before we adjourn?
You do what?
Loretta's copies that she wants.
Whatever you want to, whatever you want to do. Whatever makes sense. Should we talk about the burn dam while we're doing all that?
No.
What? This should be multitasking.
Yeah, she is. I'm doing, I'm here.
You got one for you, Roddy. I'm here.
I gotta make sure I'm dead on my, you know.
When I believe we turned the purpose on, I like to be in your office, depending on the time to show up. And you're also, is it just like?
Yeah, exactly.
Oh, come on.
Can't you see?
I'll have to add a savings for after.
Okay. Okay, so. Okay, under 4B, or 4A, excuse me, the burn dam's lifted on 1221, 23. Chief Fairbanks over in Cisco texted me yesterday, said that there's no water in the forecast and a high wind danger. His recommendation is that the county commissioners, uh, consider placing the burn ban back on. And since he's one of our covers a pretty, his fire district's a pretty good size.
I make the motion to put it back down.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Wilson. Second by Mr. Raines. All those in favor, say aye. Oppose, same sign. Take burn ban back on.
Did you vote, Judge?
Yeah.
I'll tell you which one.
Uh, B, emergency amendment.
There's that.
Okay. Uh, C, consider discussed, take action to allow the sheriff to apply for the 2024 statewide emergency radio infrastructure, infrastructure, Siri grant the amount of $32,000 for the West Central Texas Council of Governors, allow the county judge signing the required documents.
This is the, uh, by annual deal, the last time we applied for it, we got $200,000.
We didn't step forward, please. What's 32,000? Go ahead.
I wasn't planning on being long. That's why I stayed back there. But anyway, uh, the last time we applied for it, we got $200,000. This is for radio equipment and, uh, radio infrastructure, uh, that the state implemented, uh, this grant system a couple of years ago, the second round. Uh, now, uh, we need to upgrade or, and replace some of the hardware at the consoles. Uh, but the main thing is to replace the radio software, um, that had the end of life was last year. So there's no more, there's no more updates, no more, none of that. So that's what this is for, um.
Is this for the, for the dispatch center?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Does that affect the radios in the field or anything?
No.
Okay.
No, we're not allowed to apply for portable radios or mobile radios through this grant, which makes no sense, but do what I'm told. This is a hundred percent matching grant. Uh, if we get it, we get it. If we don't, we don't. Kind of thing. Todd will handle all the paperwork, everything there is to it. Uh, I just need permission to tell them to proceed.
How much is the grant?
32,000.
32,000.
I'll make the move.
I'll second. Motion by Mr. Raines, second by Mr. Maxwell. All those in favor, say aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. You have something for me, though.
No, not yet. And I don't know if they'll open it or not.
He'll ask you whenever you get it, because he knows you.
I'll make sure to bring it up.
Judge, do you, Raines and Maxwell, do y'all want to amend your motion and second to allow the judge to sign any documentation?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
There you go.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Kathy. Thanks, Sheriff. Um, D, road crossing agreement, County Road 330 and Precinct 1.
Probably just putting the water line.
So Morton Valley?
Yeah, they're good about it.
Okay.
Did you bring that to court? Don't need to print it.
I have.
Okay. Yeah, that'd be correct. Thank you.
I make the motion to approve the road crossing grant.
Motion by Mr. Wilson. And second by Mr. Crenshaw. All those in favor, say aye. Oppose, same sign. Okay. I know you need to, all the commissioners to sign off on one road crossing and one precinct.
It's a court. Do you not like signing?
I hate signing. That's all I do is sign.
I'm one of the judges. Thank you.
I know you sympathize with him.
He's got his name tattooed on his forearm. He had to roll over so he made sure he tells it. Improvise, huh, judge?
You'll be a Melvin.
Well, let him hate on you because you're being exact.
Just Robert.
Wait, let me make sure I'm on, got it.
Uh, E, county auditor, Loretta Keita filed a county investment academy continuing education report.
Yes, this is my 2023 continuing investment. Um, I had 15 hours and I have five, oop, my carryover hours, five carryover hours. I just have to file that with the court.
Okay, so that's just information only?
Uh, need to accept it, please.
Motion by Mr. Raines, second by Mr. Maxwell. All those in favor, say aye. Oppose, same sign. F, which is really long. Discuss and consider resolution authorizing the submission of a community development block grant mitigation, CDBG MIT project local hazard mitigation plans program application to Texas General Land Office and authorize the county judge to act as county executive officer and authorized representative in all matters pertaining to the county's participation in the community development block grant mitigation local hazard mitigation plans program. I think there's way too many words in there. Basically, this is our getting Langford to apply for the hazard mitigation grant, or the hazard mitigation, uh, application process.
Is this on the damn?
No, this is the actual, this is the actual hazard mitigation plan that we're supposed to have.
Okay.
We were with Wes Cog, and then they, anyway, we went back and forth and, anyway. Langford said, well, we can do that for you. So it doesn't cost the county anything, so. I think this applies for the grant that pays for the mitigation plan, the hazard mitigation plan that all the agencies are involved in.
Okay. Do you know why it has a line on this that says approved? To prove by whom? Do you have any idea?
Uh, no. I would assume it's got to be approved by the Commissioners Court to, to make the application.
You sign and me attesting that has approved. Who need to sign that to?
I guess. I, I guarantee if we don't do it right, Judy Langford will let us know pretty quick.
So do you have to print it out?
I don't have to print it out.
I'll, I'll make the move.
Okay, motion by Mr. Raines, second by Mr. Maxwell. All those in favor, say aye. Motion carries.
Kathy, can I get a copy of that?
Let's see.
Tracy will be excited about another grant filed.
Yeah, I don't know if it'll be approved. I don't know why that's on there. Uh, maybe it's approved by them. I don't know. I think your signature, my signature's on there. I'll be pointing.
Well, it says passed and approved by the Commissioners Court, so maybe you should sign it again. It's the res, you're adopting a resolution.
There's three copies too.
Yeah, I know that we reconsider C. So the, I know that we reconsider C on the agenda.
Before we adjourn.
Okay, boys, we just have one little.
Okay, so let me restate only that for you. How, it should have, that 252,000 should have been in the beginning market value. I just didn't move it over. We deemed it and opened it in December.
Are you gonna do it before?
Oh, no. It should have been moved in the beginning market value because it was in December.
You just want to correct that email it to me?
Yeah.
Because I've already approved the corrections, so.
Yep.
Where'd you come up with a sort of signature?
DH.
Like the backside of it.
Yep.
It's been a little burnt on.
We'll call, we'll get all of it.
For jump in the team?
Yep.
Put the block. Oh, yeah, new floor. Yeah. Very good.
Yep.
Oh, really? Yeah. That would seem very. Ms. Redd, did you get your onions planted asleep?
I did not.
What, what will happen?
I think it's still gonna freeze.
Oh. It could, it could. Just because it's 80 today don't mean it ain't gonna be 30 tomorrow.
It's snow in April. So when are we going to do it, Ms. Redd? I need to know.
Um, next weekend. Probably next weekend.
Okay, here we go.
We covered up.
Can I get on that list where you're coming by planting mine tree?
He said we, didn't he? I heard we, we. I heard we. Robert's doing yard work. He's planting a garden. We can cover it up if it freezes.
I'm so kidding about that story about planting. We'll adjourn first.
It's better than you. Hi, I found her way up.
Yeah.
I'm with her.
My dad walked up there with. She was so proud.
Oh, that's funny.
Oh, my gosh. I thought, man, she is. She asked me outside going planting.
Y'all, I'm gonna adjourn. I'm adjourned. See you.
See you later.
Have a good day. Be careful. Where you going, Jake? We gonna see you this afternoon. Look forward to it. I don't know how many we got.
Felony Court had 70 something, I think, on their docket. A lot of misdemeanors, yeah. Probably about 20. Need to go to, what's today?
Can you send me?
We're waiting on you. You're backing up. No, Kathy said right there, said we had to sign before we got done. No, there's a whole.
Let it go, let it go.
Yeah. Do once, eat, please everything. Make multiple copies.
Now that's some more work on me.
I'll make the multiple copies?
Yeah.
Oh, wow. See you, Jake.
Y'all done with everything here yet?
Almost. Getting close here.
You still signing stuff?
We'll sign and stuff.
Okay. Got one more.
Yep, then, then, then we can adjourn.
But you're losing your audience. Yeah.
You pretty much lost all of us.
Yeah, don't miss one.
Hey, Shobbit, would you send that, on that appeal, that was not in the municipal court? Would you contact, email that guy back and tell him that was not in the municipal court? That's a JP Warren's, so that's where he has to start. Thank you, before I forget. Thank you, before I forget.
Yeah. It's another story, I need to tell you. Y'all should have somebody get it, maybe stand up comedy or something going on while all this, you know.
Oh, I think we got.
I think we got a whole table full of stand up comedian.
I made the motion to adjourn.
Motion by Mr. Raines, second by Mr. Maxwell, all those in favor say aye. Motion.